Good morning. My name is Douglas Browning. As Chair of the University of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees, I would like to welcome everyone to the annual meeting of our board. This meeting has been duly advertised as a public meeting in accordance with the Sunshine Act and is therefore open to members of the public as observers. This meeting is also being streamed on the university's YouTube channel and is being recorded. The recording will be made available later via the Board of Trustees website. This is a hybrid meeting with attendees who are in person as well as others joining us virtually via Zoom. A quorum is present for the transaction of business. Participation in the meeting is limited to members of the board and through those individuals the board has invited in advance to take part. The minutes of the February 24, 2023 Winter Board of Trustees Meeting were distributed to you in advance of today's meeting and can be found in the meeting materials. Are there any corrections or additions? May I have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Abstentions? Hearing none, the minutes as circulated are approved. The minutes of the April 3, 2023 Special Board of Trustees Meeting were distributed to you in advance of today's meeting as well and can be found in the meeting materials. Are there any corrections or additions? May I have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The meeting minutes as circulated are approved. I would like to acknowledge and welcome our ex officio trustees or their designees in attendance. Dr. Kate M. Shaw, who is the Deputy Secretary and Commissioner for Post-Secondary and Higher Education of the State of Pennsylvania Department of Education, is the designee of Secretary of Education Dr. Khalid Mummin, and a very good dinner partner. I enjoyed our discussion. County Executive Rich Fitzgerald, our good friends always. Thank you for being present. And then Representative Dan Frankel, who is Governor Shapiro's designee to the board. Sadly, since our winter meeting, members of our board and the Pitt community have either passed or lost family members. In particular, I want to acknowledge the passing of former trustees Herb Douglas, Bud Schuster, Joan M. Smith, and Heinrich Bonenberg. Dr. Heinrich Bonenberg was a special trustee from 1997 to 2001 and a member of the Board of Visitors for the University Center for International Studies. The recipient of a doctorate in nuclear engineering, active in professional and policy circles, and the recipient of numerous awards in his native Germany, he developed a post-COVID partnerships with Russia, Germany, and the United States to promote exchanges of cultural, intellectual, and financial capital. Joan M. Smith served as an alumni trustee for 13 years between 1982 and 1997. She graduated with a degree in chemical engineering from Pitt in 1958, the only woman in her class. An active Pitt supporter, she served as an officer in the Pitt Alumni and Engineering Alumni Associations and the Golden Panthers. She was a Pitt mom with several of her children graduating from the university. Bud Schuster was a 1954 graduate of the College of Arts and Sciences and served as an alumni trustee from 1970 to 1973. During his time at Pitt, he was actively involved in the debate team, honor society, and the intra-fraternity council. After graduating from Pitt, he served in the Army and later embarked on a career in the computer industry, becoming president and CEO of Datal Corp and the founder of a software, computer software company. He served 28 years in the U.S. House of Representatives, three terms as Chair of the House Transportation Committee. Herbert P. Douglas Jr. was the oldest living U.S. Olympic medalist and a University of Pittsburgh alumnus who served on the Board of Trustees from 1999 to 2002 and subsequently served as an emeritus trustee for 21 years. In 1948, he graduated from the university with a bachelor's degree in physical education and two years later obtained his master's degree. He was a recipient of the 225 Medallion Award, the AAAC Distinguished Alumni Award, a legacy laureate, and several other Pitt honors. As one of the Panthers' all-time greatest athletes, he was inducted into the inaugural Pitt Athletics Hall of Fame class in 2018. He established the Herbert P. Douglas Jr. Scholarship to support a student member of the university's track and field team. Herb was an ultimate trailblazer and a proud African-American alumnus who understood the transformative power of a Pitt education, a true champion of and for Pitt. As many of you on this board will recall, we have approved and endorsed the proposal by the university to name the future track and field facility in honor of Herbert P. Douglas Jr. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I would ask, offer my condolences to all of those who have recently lost loved ones. Please join me in a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. We will now receive updates from the committees of the board, which have held public meetings since our Winter Board of Trustees Meeting in February. I would like to call on Pete Farischetti, the Chair of the Property and Facilities Committee, for his report.
Thank you, Chairperson Browning. The Property and Facilities Committee has held two public meetings since the February meeting. During the public committee meeting held on May 16, 2023, the committee approved four projects, including the fourth and final phase of the Hillman Library renovation project. Phase four will renovate the ground floor, construct a new glass entry atrium, and upgrade the building core, including all restrooms and elevators. This project was approved in the amount of $69 million. Also renovations to the biomedical science tower III, regional biocontainment laboratory, the university's hub for infection biology within the Center for Vaccine Research. This project was approved in the amount of $7.48 million. Replacement of the roof at Thaw Hall, a historic landmark constructed in 1910. The project was approved in the amount of $14 million. And upgrades to the Bradford campus Kessel Athletic Complex to support enrollment and provide a venue comparable to other institutions within the Allegheny Mountain Collegiate Conference. This project was approved in the amount of $6.5 million. Combined, these four projects are projected to generate 707 construction and support jobs for the state and regional economies. The committee also approved a lease at the new UPMC Mercy Pavilion for the School of Medicine. The university will lease approximately 110,000 square feet in the new building for the Department of Ophthalmology, Physical Medicine, and the Rehabilitation and Neuroengineering Laboratory. The lease will have a term of 10 years with options for renewal. The lease was approved with a total 10-year term rent of approximately $92 million. Also, during a public committee meeting held on June 12, 2023, the committee approved the lease of approximately 74% of rentable space within the proposed university-owned Bioforge Facility to Elevate Bio Base Camp Inc. as tenant, pending finalization of the lease agreement and financial due diligence. The lease term will be 10 years with two 10-year renewal options. The committee also approved the core and shell construction for the 185,000 square feet Bioforge Facility within the Hazelwood Green Development at an estimated cost not to exceed $120 million. The core and shell construction project is projected to generate 828 construction and support jobs for the state and regional economies. Chairperson Browning, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Pete. I would like to now call on Lou Sastello, Board Vice Chairperson and Chair of the Investments Committee, for his report.
Thank you, Chairperson Browning. The Investment Committee held a public meeting via Zoom on June 13, 2023 to approve two spending distribution rates for the Consolidated Endowment Fund, specifically with respect to the university's operating funds quasi-endowment, the income percentage will remain unchanged for fiscal year 2024 and will be 4.75% of the three-year average market value. The income from this fund supports student financial aid. With respect to the other funds in the Consolidated Endowment Fund, the income percentage will remain unchanged for fiscal year 2024 and will be 4.25% of the three-year average market value. Both distribution amounts will increase by approximately 5.3% relative to the distribution amounts for fiscal year 2023. In addition, there is also an annual 45-basis-point charge to the funds or to fund administrative costs. Chairperson Browning, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Lou. I would now ask that Trustee David Chavron, Chair of the Governance and Nominee Committee, provide his report. His report will contain several resolutions regarding the election or reelection of trustees to the board and to other offices for the board's consideration. I would like to remind those trustees who are the subject of any of the resolutions to abstain from the vote on that resolution. Excuse me. I am a nominee in the first and second resolutions and will therefore ask Trustee Chavron and his designee for one of the resolutions where he is also a nominee to handle the vote on these resolutions. I will be abstaining from the resolution for both.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Chairperson. The Governance and Nominating Committee is charged with the responsibility of presenting recommendations to the Board of Trustees for candidates to serve as trustees and for other trustee positions. As permitted under the Sunshine Act, the committee held executive sessions prior to this meeting for the purpose of considering such appointments. Full discussions were conducted, but no vote or formal action was taken. As a duly advertised public meeting on June 6, 2023, the committee endorsed the recommendations contained in the resolutions that are before the board today and which are all included in the materials for this meeting. The meeting materials contain committees, nominees for, members of the University of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees, the chairperson of the University of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees, the vice chairperson of the University of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees, and university directors to the Board of Directors of UPMC. Starting with the committees nominees for the trustees of the board, there are several incumbent trustees, including myself, who are presented for reelection to the University of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees in the categories noted in the resolutions. The incumbent trustees are Robert Agbade, Douglas Browning, Lou Sastello, myself, Deborah Gelati, and Michael Wells. In addition, there are two candidates for election to the University of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees. The biographies of these candidates are contained in the meeting materials. The candidates are Emile Spatafoor, representing Pitt Titusville, and David Tillstone, representing Pitt Greensburg. Since I am up for reelection, I will turn the meeting over to Trustee Robbie Loxbacher, who's online, to present the resolution while my own nomination is considered. Robbie?
Yes. Thank you, Trustee Chavron. On behalf of the Governance and Nominating Committee, I move that these candidates be elected or reelected to the Board of Trustees as set forth in the resolution before the board today. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
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 I think that was everyone. Okay. Thank you. The resolution has been approved. So Doug, I think I can turn the meeting back to you for any comments, and then you'll turn it back to Dave.
Thank you, Robbie. For those of you who have been, for the members who have been reelected to the board, congratulations. I look forward to continuing to work with you and thank you for agreeing to serve another term on the board.
Excellent. Thank you, Chairperson Browning. The next item before the board is a resolution recommending the election of Douglas M. Browning as Chairperson of the board to serve a one-year term ending June 2024 in accordance with the provisions of the bylaws of the university. On behalf of the Governance and Nominating Committee, I move that Douglas Browning be elected to serve as Board Chairperson of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Is that recorded? Any absten-- I'm sorry, was that, was that all ayes or was that? Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. Congratulations, Doug. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All I can say, Doug, has been quite a first year in your tenure, and I think we all thank you for the tremendous work you've put in in guiding this university into its next chapters. So thank you all very much.
Dave, if I may--
No, you may not. No, just kidding.
I want to thank all of you for the honor of serving as your chair. First year has been a little bumpy. I appreciate your patience and understanding as I've sort of learned and appreciate the role and responsibilities of the position. I look forward to your support and guidance going forward, and hopefully we can smooth out some of those little bumps. But I appreciate it. This is a high honor, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you again.
Thank you. The next item before the board is a resolution recommending the reelection of Louis R. Sastello as Vice Chairperson of the board to serve a one-year term ending June 2024 in accordance with the provisions of the bylaws of the university. On behalf of the Governance and Nominating Committee, I move that Louis Sastello be elected to serve as Board Vice Chairperson of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstentions?
I abstain.
Excellent. Great. Thank you very much. Again, congratulations, Lou.
Congratulations.
And again, you've been right there with Doug in helping to shepherd the university through a transition, which is both difficult but also incredibly important. So I think we all thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the resolution regarding the Governance and Nominating Committee's recommendations of trustees to serve as university directors to the UPMC board. This year, the Governance and Nominating Committee is recommending the reelection of those university directors of the UPMC Board of Directors whose terms were due to expire this year, Eva Tansky Blum and Michael G. Wells. On behalf of the Governance and Nominating Committee, I move that these nominees be reelected as university directors to the UPMC Board of Directors as set forth in the resolution before the board today. May I have a motion and second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstentions?
I abstain.
I abstain as well.
Great. The resolution has been approved. Chairperson Browning, this concludes my report.
Thank you, David. First of all, let me congratulate Eva Tansky Blum and Trustee Michael Wells for their willingness to again serve on the UPMC Board of Directors. We have great leadership over there from John Surma, who is part of our board, and so we all look forward to continuing that strong partnership and working relationship. And then on a personal note, I would like to thank Lou Sastello for his continued dedicated service to the board as its Vice Chairperson. Your leadership and your engagement with the board and support to me is greatly appreciated. So thank you. I would also like to acknowledge Patricia Horaho as she concludes her term as the Chair of the Affirmative Action Diversity and Inclusion Committee at the end of June. General, as I have said before, we want to thank you for your expert guidance, hard work, and dedication to your committee and this board. A small token of appreciation will be sent to you as an expression of our immense gratitude for your service. Thank you very much.
My honor, thank you.
With term limits and the election of new candidates comes the mixed emotions of having to acknowledge that other members of the board will end their term today as well. I would like to acknowledge Tom Kurtz and Janine Shonaker, who are ending their terms as special trustees and regional campus representatives. We appreciate all that you have done for Johnstown and Bradford and the university. We are extremely grateful to both of you for your extraordinary service and commitment to the board and the university. And again, a small token of our appreciation will be sent to you as an expression of our immense gratitude for your service. I would now like to call on-- on Chancellor Pat Gallagher for his final report as chancellor at the University of Pittsburgh.
Good morning, everyone. I'd noticed during the elections, the one group that didn't get any applause was all the reelected trustees, but I want you to know I was applauding madly myself. I won't do it here because there's nothing worse than somebody applauding in front of a live mic. But more sincerely, thank you all for your service. You know, these are big times, and there's nothing larger for a board than navigating a university through a leadership transition. So I just want to acknowledge your service and your sacrifice for the university through this vital time. It's incredibly important. It's once again my privilege to deliver the June report, and kind of as a reminder, this is not the State of the Union one. That was the last meeting where we talked about the comprehensive annual report in September, I guess is when that was. But today, this is an opportunity to touch on a few highlights and some timely topics as we fulfill our mission here at the university. First of all, we are in budget season, so let me turn to the ongoing Commonwealth budget process. The state's formal deadline for a new budget is June 30, so next week. Of course, as you all know, that date depends actually on progress and when it happens, but it's very much underway right now. This appropriation has clear and significant implications for the Pitt community every year because it is the passage of this appropriation in the non-preferred appropriation that provides the funds that support an in-state tuition discount for our students. So we are paying close attention. The situation, of course, is fluid as it always is through a political process of this type, and we look forward to its conclusion as soon as possible as the bill moves out of the House and into the Senate and hopefully to the governor's desk. This is also the time of year on the admissions side where I tend to give an admissions update, even though it's not totally final yet. But in this case, I'm going to not just talk about Pitt's applications numbers, but I'm going to look more broadly at enrollment trends around us. So this year, we set a new record for the number of applications on the Pittsburgh campus, which is actually astonishing because of the scale of the new record we set just a year ago. You heard about this in February when it was kind of new development, and I projected a number which has now been exceeded. So this is a new record, and demand to attend this campus has never been higher. But there are some other metrics that give a more complete picture of how Pitt is doing, and I'd like to touch on a few of those. By June every year, for this campus, the admissions picture begins to come into sharper focus as accepted first-year students begin to put down their deposits. Based on deposit data for the Pittsburgh campus this fall, Pitt is clearly drawing students nationally and globally, with deposited students representing 46 U.S. states and Guam and students from 35 different countries outside the United States. Academic measures in this group are remarkable. The average weighted GPA is over 4.0, and test scores for those taking the test remain extraordinarily high. This again will be one of the most diverse and accomplished incoming classes in Pitt's history. And as we draw students from all over the world, it's important to remember our third, our largest constituency continues to be students from our home state of Pennsylvania, now representing 53% of all deposits this fall are from the Commonwealth, and 16% of those are actually coming from rural Pennsylvania, which has been an important segment of the population for us as we are very focused on meeting their needs. A number of those students show interest in our regional campuses where recruitment is a priority, and a higher percentage of rural students in Pennsylvania are Pell-eligible, so they also tend to have greater financial need. They're also a priority demographic for us and an area where we've had increasing success attracting these kind of students to Pitt, and we are committed to doing more. Pell-eligible and rural students may have the most to gain from a university degree financially over the course of their lives, but these are challenging demographics to recruit right now, and Pitt is not the only one going after these prospective students. These are national trends I'd like to take a few minutes to explore because the university's probably going to have to grapple with some of these enrollment dynamics for the next couple of years. We know that enrollment trends on the Pittsburgh campus paint a very positive, bright picture, but Pitt is not a one-campus institution. We also have regional campuses in Johnstown, Greensburg, Bradford, and of course, the Hub Campus in Titusville, where the enrollment picture is complex and continues to be challenging. This graph shows the 10-year enrollment trends on our Pittsburgh campus and the aggregate enrollment on our four regional campuses. Now, I'm not doing this to draw an unnecessary distinction, but I want you to know that the trends here are robust. The pandemic is essentially invisible on this chart. The trends we were talking about existed before the pandemic, and they continue today. What we believe is happening and something I certainly ask the board to continue to pay close attention to is this bifurcation in the market. On the Pittsburgh campus, demand is strong, steady, and rapidly growing over this period. On the same side, we're seeing declining enrollment on our regional campuses. It may not look so dramatic on this scale, but over that period, that's a 30% enrollment drop in about a decade. We know that undergraduate enrollment peaked nationally in 2010, and we've seen since then that the declines are being felt unevenly across the institutions in the higher education landscape. This split, this bifurcation that I mentioned, with high demand, high enrollment on large, very selective flagship campuses, and lower and decreasing demand on less selective smaller campuses is in fact a national and regional trend. To make that clear, this is not happening because we're failing to prioritize the regional campuses or to recruit in rural Pennsylvania. I just want to remind everyone that the board has endorsed and approved a whole host of efforts that are designed to make these campuses more attractive with new buildings, new degree programs that align with the needs of the region, and we've had grand openings and engineering labs and new nursing programs. One thing that you may not have heard about is-- One thing that you may not have heard about is the Chronicle of Higher Education last month featured a story on our regional recruiter, Daryl Burley. Daryl grew up on a dairy farm in Pennsylvania where he worked alongside his cousins. His parents worked in factories, and his mother encouraged him to be the very first in his family to go to college. He eventually earned a master's degree in education and found work as a recruiter for two Pennsylvania universities, and we hired him to recruit across rural and small-town Pennsylvania. This is up-close and in-person work. Daryl drives more than 10,000 miles a year, and he's helping to bring students to these areas, to all of our campuses. But I want to point out that despite all of these intense efforts that we are doing to support our campuses, there are some headwinds that are happening at the national scale and across our state. So what I'd like to do now is turn to comparing enrollment at Pitt's regional campuses to our other peer institutions in Pennsylvania. And specifically, we have some selected data over five to six years of enrollment data for the Pennsylvania Community College System, the Pennsylvania State System of Higher Education, which we often refer to as PASHI, and the Penn State University's Commonwealth campuses, of which there are 19. Now, these are pulled from three different sources and not all years available, but the goal here is to show you that the same trends that we are seeing on our regional campuses are also evident in these other systems, again, before, during, and after the pandemic, and these trends are persistent today. This is consistent with data that we look at across the country, reflecting this bifurcation of the market between schools that seem to be getting, you know, record numbers of applications and others that continue to see some very large declining enrollments. One of the big questions everyone is facing, is this a cyclical effect or is this a systemic change? Increasingly, given the long duration of these trends and how stable they are, it's my view that these are more systemic in nature than cyclical. And it raises a whole host of questions that we need a more detailed understanding of. Are these students going somewhere else? Are they simply not choosing to pursue a university degree? What is the largest impediments facing them to college education? And what are the deciding factors that they are looking at as they make these decisions on school versus employment, trade school, military service? The answers to these questions have massive implications for the country, but also for states as we look at our policies around how to support higher education for our citizens and prepare them to work and live in the economies of the future. Now, Pennsylvania may be especially susceptible to disruption because of how varied and non-systemic the state's support. We have a very fragmented system that funds and support higher education here in the Commonwealth. And I just want to note that under Governor Shapiro, there's a very significant discussion happening right now at the state level on this specific issue. His budget calls for increasing support of institutions like Pitt this year, but very specifically, I want to draw your attention to the fact that he also called for a new blueprint for how the Commonwealth will support higher education, and that discussion is ramping up and is being led by Kate Shaw, who is here today with us from representing the Secretary of Education and the governor's effort here. She is the one leading this working group to explore how to address these fundamental shifts and how to ensure that the access and affordability of an education that this Commonwealth needs will be met. This will have implications for all of us, including the University of Pittsburgh, but in my view, this is an enormous opportunity to, instead of simply reacting to these trends, you know, getting into a mode where we're just bailing out failing institutions, to really look at this systematically, treat this as an opportunity, and to reposition the Commonwealth to serve its citizens and grow its economy. So I want to applaud the governor, and Kate, I want to thank you for all the work that you're doing on all of our behalf. One final note, one thing you often hear, we've heard it before, is the demographic cliff. And as a reminder to everyone, that's basically an aftereffect of the 2008 recession when the fertility rate in the United States declined. So if you add 18 years to 2008, 2026, the number of college-age students will decline in the United States. It's not 2026 yet. This is not the demographic cliff at all. That's still coming, and so these trends will actually accelerate as we move forward. And, you know, one of the things that will matter to a campus is not just the overall average number of students, but specifically what choices they're making, where they're going, and also are states competing and growing and bringing people in. So we have some work to do as these complex forces continue their work across the national university landscape. I want to touch on research, and specifically two timely topics related to our research effort. One is, we all know that Pitt is a research powerhouse. In fact, the region centered around Pittsburgh is advantaged by having the research intensity it has from the University of Pittsburgh and Carnegie Mellon together. This research, of course, is a primary part of our mission and a focal point for us, but it is essential that, to really fulfill our mission, our research capabilities have to convert into real benefit for the region, and that includes driving economic growth. This is a strategy we're pursuing in partnerships with our region's foundations, our companies, and with government to drive the commercial sector that thrives alongside the assets of the University of Pittsburgh. Pitt Bioforge is the latest manifestation of this strategy. Of course, it's a result of a partnership between the university and the Richard King-Mellon Foundation, and thanks to the recent actions of this board, by approving the purchase of land and the facility's core and shell construction and the lease, Pitt Bioforge now moves towards execution. This specialized bio-manufacturing facility for innovative cell and gene therapies will be one of the most significant regional developments in recent years because we're acting as the catalyst to bring an entirely new economic sector to take advantage of these intellectual and healthcare riches that we have in our region. This is all about leveraging our unique strengths and abilities as a research university, and it's one of the things that sets apart a research-intensive university from others. We have a long, anyway, this work is now moving to implementation. I want to note a key feature of this work is that it's being done in partnership with the communities where this takes place. This is embracing a place-based strategy, and so we are leveraging our long history of work with the Hazelwood community, but we are accelerating and deepening that effort as this project begins there. So we are committed to working with members of the Hazelwood community to ensure that the economic benefits of all of this work are realized regionally and in the place and not simply around the technology itself. An example of that just happened in the papers this week. Growing, the story was covering the growing state support for regional technical hub and cluster activities like the one I just spoke about. In this case, it was referring to the advanced manufacturing hub at the Pittsburgh Airport. This was an economic development partnership, and Rich, I want to acknowledge you and Christina for your partnership with the University of Pittsburgh. As we realize this idea of leveraging the deep manufacturing routes of Western Pennsylvania and the deep technical and research routes of our universities to create Neighborhood 91, and our trustee, Don Hickton, played a very direct role in sort of putting that together. As that program has really, you know, begun to attract companies and take hold, the story reflects how the state is using this as a model for regional economic development, and so I want to thank everyone involved with that effort. Another final aspect of Pitt's research activity that I want to note is happening in our communities. Over the last decade, Pitt has become a recognized leader in what is known as community-engaged scholarship. This is the kind of work that a university does that depends upon collaborations with the communities, whether it's in research or service areas. And one of the things that cements our leadership is the fact that we have made a commitment in focused areas through our community engagement centers. Lena Distillio is here with us today, and I want to thank her and her team for continuing to bring this program to life. These engagement centers are basically the nurturing infrastructure that supports collaboration. They're collaborative infrastructure between a community and a university, and they come to life in the community. We felt it was important that that touch point needed to be there, and so our community engagement centers are headquartered in homes, in facilities, in these neighborhoods of Pittsburgh. And specifically recently, we had the opportunity to open the groundbreaking, celebrate the groundbreaking for what will be the new permanent home of the Hill District Community Engagement Center at the New Granada Theater, which is a historic facility in Homewood area, and again, an anchor for their economic development, and we're excited and thrilled to be part of that. We have been doing work in the Hill District for a long time through our temporary home, but this is a major milestone. And I just want to note, we should all stay tuned for future developments regarding the founding of our third CEC in Hazelwood, which remains our ongoing goal here. We started the discussion with Harrisburg because of the significant budget implications for the university, but I want to bookend my remarks on research, in particular by focusing on the federal level and what it means for Pitt. Federal funding is what principally drives the research activities, or at least the sponsored research activities of this university. Collectively, those federal funds are very significant, many times larger even than the state appropriation. Of course, they fund different things, but we should care a lot about what's happening in Congress in this area. Most notably, in terms of research funding, the recent debt ceiling package that was signed into law in early June came with it discretionary spending caps over the next two fiscal years. This means that the remaining non-defense spending bills that will be considered in the House would all see significant reductions. And this could include as much as a quarter to a third of the funding sliced from current levels. So this is still early, but, you know, the caps will have an effect on how much is available for appropriations to the agencies that fund the work that Pitts does, including the National Institutes of Health, the National Science Foundation, the Department of Energy, and others. And also to make some of the planned increases, including that that were part of the CHIPS and Science Act, this certainly diminishes the hopes for the significant increases that many were hoping for. So in addition to all of these, the other thing that's happening with the bills is that the research enterprise itself is increasingly being looked at through the lens of geopolitical competition between countries, and so many of these funding bills include non-financial terms that touch on research restrictions to improve research security. Now, these are important, but I should note, these will also have an impact on the cost and risks associated with university-based research and something that we need to continue to be attentive to. So that's sort of on the business side of things. Let me turn, as I always want to do, focusing on some of our students and our achievements. A couple of recent highlights from a whole host of recent student honors. Anna Lee is an M.D.-Ph.D. student in our School of Medicine. She is Pitt's first-ever recipient of the Paul and Daisy Soros Fellowship for New Americans. In addition to her M.D., Anna is pursuing a PhD in computational biology. Michael Baker, a senior in the Dietrich School, is the second student in Pitt history to be named a Gates-Cambridge Scholar. The first was back in 2009, so I didn't get to enjoy that announcement. Other student highlights from the spring semester include Grace Flury, a junior studying synthetic organic chemistry, who was named a Goldwater Scholar. Our undergraduates secured an impressive 15 Gilman International Scholarships from the U.S. Department of State, and 10 Pitt students and alumni were named as 2023-24 Fulbright Scholars, continuing our streak of annually being named a top producer of Fulbrights in the United States. Something you may have noticed, tomorrow, some special hometown recognition for a Pitt alumnus, a member of the Pitt staff, Sam Clancy. On Wednesday, the Pittsburgh City Council declared the Saturday, tomorrow, Sam Clancy Day in Pittsburgh. Sam was a decorated student athlete and four-year starter for the Panthers. He was such a gifted athlete that he was drafted into both the NBA and the NFL without ever having played college football. He's, of course, a member of our Pitt Athletics Hall of Fame, but many of us know on campus as the indispensable part of our Pitt varsity letter club and an ambassador to so many of our student athletes. So I just want to extend a congratulations to Sam on his day tomorrow. A few leadership updates. The search committee for dean of our largest school conducted a national search and found the ideal candidate here on campus with Adam Lieberich. He becomes the new Betty and Ralph Bailey Dean of the Dietrich School of Arts and Sciences and assumes that role on July 1. He is currently the school's associate dean for research and faculty development, professor of physics and astronomy, and director of the Pittsburgh Quantum Institute. So I want to congratulate Adam. There are a few more dean searches will be underway in the not-too-distant future, but one chair that was, one position recently filled on interim basis was Mary Krausli, who was now named the interim dean of the school of law. She has served as the dean previously in her career at Pitt, so we're fortunate at this time of transition to have Mary back helming the school. There's also an active search underway for our next dean of the School of Dental Medicine, and as many of you saw from Wednesday, there will be an interim dean appointment for the School of Education following the very recent news that Dean Valerie Kinlock has been selected as the next president of the Johnson C. Smith University. Not only a noted HBCU, but more importantly, Valerie's alma mater, which makes this news particularly a special appointment for her. So I would extend my congratulations to Valerie on that, despite our sadness at seeing her leave the University of Pittsburgh. And I also want to note Rachel Decker, Rachel Lou, who's Pitt's new vice chancellor for University Communications and Marketing. She began in May. She has spent the last five years as Director of Strategic Communications at MITRE, a nonprofit technology and research development company that partners with and works across government, industry, and academia. And before that, she was the Vice President of Public Relations and Corporate Communications for Strayer Communication. One other transition, of course, is happening in one of the most important positions of the university, namely the Office of the Provost. Joseph McCarthy will become Pitt's interim provost in just a few days, a week from today, I guess. And Joe is a very familiar face to all of us here, as he is currently the vice provost for undergraduate studies. He's a very experienced hand in all areas of the provost. He served as the interim dean of the Frederick Honors College. He was recently the leader of our highly successful Middle States Commission on Higher Education Accreditation, which was a very extensive two-year process that we have to do just once every 10 years. And he has, of course, the benefit of a terrific team in place under Ann's leadership, and so I have great confidence in Joe's ability to take the helm at a very important transition point for the university. What that all means, of course, is, you know, Ann is wrapping up on the same time scale her very successful but second stint at the university. Of course, her first, much like May, when she was here as a student earning two masters and a doctorate in philosophy, I didn't quite do that much, Ann. But her second, of course, of the five incredibly consequential years here as our senior vice chancellor and provost. I believe Ann's leadership has had a powerful and lasting impact on this university. It was her that introduced the Pitt Success Program, which was the largest restructuring of financial aid in Pitt's history and an enormous and needed step forward in keeping Pitt accessible and affordable. And actually, even now, in the, with the benefit of some hindsight, a timely move, given the rapid shift of college rankings towards being based on measures of social mobility rather than on selectivity. We've been really advantaged by that move to bolster our financial aid to support the needs of all. She was also the one, need I remind you, that led our academic programs through the incredible disruption of the pandemic, one of the most tumultuous times in our history, and she did it incredibly well. And she also saw one of the most remarkable increases, as you just saw earlier, in the demand for Pitt education as measured by applications and enrollments, and actually managing all the complication that goes with all of that increase in demand, but also with all of the benefits that comes from it, including the increasing quality and diversity of the classes that are being welcomed onto our campus. So in my view, the bottom line is that Pitt is simply better off, thanks to Ann's leadership and effort, and I want to thank you for that. I'm incredibly proud of you and what you've been able to accomplish. I'm excited for you, a little bit worried, but mostly excited as you take on I'm excited for you, a little bit worried, but mostly excited as you take on the helm of another university. They're lucky to have you. And so on behalf of the university, thank you. But on a personal note, I just want to say, thank you for being such an invaluable part of my team and for being such a great colleague and friend. Appreciate it. Thank you. So I'm next. So another, I will also, as a Pitt alum, be returning soon because Joan Gable is about to prepare to step in as our 19th Chancellor of the university. And we've been talking about this for many weeks. I believe of all the leadership transitions that I've been part of or seen, this is one of the best ones in terms of planning and execution. I just want to acknowledge, there's a big team working very hard on ensuring that this transition is great for the university and, and gives Joan every ability to be successful in her role, and I know she will be. So I'm excited to see that transition come, and I, I know we're going to have, I'm really excited because I also think this is a great move for the university. This is the right person to take the helm of this university at this time with the kind of challenges we face. I couldn't be more delighted to see what's going to come next. But that also means this is my final report as chancellor, so I just wanted to close by making what I hope is a very obvious observation for you. That being the chancellor of the university is obviously an extraordinary, extraordinary privilege and honor. But if you look at it that way, I think you miss a key part, because the chancellor role is actually a touch point in a larger leadership team. So the simple truth is that everything that has happened over the past 10 years has happened because there is a group of people that are dedicated to stewarding and ensuring that this remarkable institution not only stays where it is, but adapts and grows and improves and gets better. And so I would just want to acknowledge that team that I was part of. Most immediately, that includes the remarkable group of individuals and professionals in the leadership team of the administration of the university. They are all dedicated professionals, every single one, and on a daily basis, they are the ones who bear the full weight of responsibility for the operations and direction of this university. They are my closest advisors, and without them, nothing would come from my office except words. So I owe them a lot for their dedication, their sacrifice, but most of all, for their trust and wise counsel. They have also, in doing this, have become some of my most cherished colleagues and friends. And so to that remarkable team, I want to thank all of you. The next team is this board. The full responsibility for the well-being of the University of Pittsburgh is entrusted to the members of this board. That's why it's called a Board of Trustees. To carry out that responsibility, the board depends on administration. And so what they do is they hire and oversee a chancellor who's entrusted to manage the institution. So the chancellor is a touch point between the university and the board itself. So in a very direct sense, I have been kind of the executive agent of this body while I've also been a member of it, which means that of everything that we've done, everything we've celebrated, everything we've accomplished, has happened because of your active and full support. The simple truth is you cannot be an effective chancellor without the support of a board. So to all of you, including those that aren't here anymore, who previously served on this board, I just want to thank you for entrusting me and our leadership team. Every good thing that's happened, happened because we did it together. And I want you to know how deeply all of us at the university understand that fact and appreciate what you do for this university. Now finally, there's one group that doesn't show up on any org chart of the university, and if you're looking for leadership, you might miss it, but in my view, it's the most important group of all, and that's the members of the university community itself. Universities are not hierarchies. You'll misunderstand them if you think of it that way. In fact, if many of you heard me say this, they're upside down. The action of the university, the most important things that happen, happen because where the students and faculty are working together. That's where the mission is. And it's the role of the administration to support them and to hold them on the highest possible platform we can. So.
Chancellor, if you will proceed, please.
Thank you. So of course, we will respond to their demands and interest as well offline, but that was not the crescendo I was going for. But it is important that I, I remind you that you also can't be a chancellor if you don't have the support of the university that you lead. It's really that simple. That's support, the reason we're here. And I just want to note that this is real thing. It happens both formally, through shared governance, through our senate, through our, you know, the organizations that work with us on a daily basis, but it's also something that happens probably a thousand times a day as the administration sits down and works on common issues. So I'm going to start, I'm going to end my remarks where I started them nine years ago. It has been the honor of my career to have enjoyed your trust, your understanding and your support. And to the Pitt community, I will simply say, we're here because of you, and we could not be what we are, this amazing university, without you. So thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, this concludes my last report to the board, and I thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. We would now like to take a moment to acknowledge a dedicated and key member of the university's senior leadership team, Provost and Senior Vice Chancellor Anne Cudd. As Chancellor noted, Anne will be departing the university on June 30 to assume the presidency of Portland State University in Portland, Oregon. The university has thrived under her leadership, and there are many significant accomplishments that have occurred during her tenure. As the former Chair of the Academic Affairs and Libraries Committee, I had the privilege, pleasure and privilege of working directly with Anne on many issues. Anne, unfortunately, you will remain on speed dial, but I want to let you know that I will personally miss you. Will you please join me in watching a brief presentation on Provost Cudd?
I met Anne over 40 years ago, when I was a new assistant professor at the university, and she was a more senior graduate student. So we go way back, and over the years, I had the opportunity to see Anne's career progress. So when she came to Pitt as the provost, I couldn't have been happier. She really brought with her some new ideas of how we could do things. And when you think about the impact that she's had, particularly on the undergraduate programs at Pitt, the diversity initiatives that she had, the access and affordability, which really transformed the way we did financial aid, the way we recruited students.
Anne's been great to work with. She is very pragmatic and very like, how are we going to fix this problem? And I love that about her. She devised a plan to make sure that we could help those people get to a place where they could stay in school and get a degree.
She has a really strong devotion to Pitt's public research mission.
I think that will be a lasting legacy.
One of my favorite stories about Anne is that she actually took me to the University of Kansas so I could see a basketball game, and we went to visit Naismith's grave, and, I mean, it was the best time ever. And I only got to do that because I had this amazing colleague, Anne Cudd.
Ran into Anne in the stairwell, and she was wearing gym clothes, breathing a little heavy, and told us that she was actually on her second Cathy, which I didn't know what that meant until she explained that she was actually walking from the bottom of the cathedral to the top and then back down, and that was one Cathy. I was impressed, because I personally would maybe take two floors of Cathy as my target.
I'm really excited for Anne and for the opportunity that she has at Portland State.
That's a, a good university to be president of, and I hope she does well there.
I would tell her she should stay really close to her general counsel, because general councils can be amazing advisors to presidents, as they have been to provost.
She's a great recognizer of talent, and she needs to lean on that and build herself a really great team.
It's a great opportunity to continue helping students achieve success in higher education in a different role.
Thank you, Anne, for the opportunity, for the education, for the experience.
This is such a bittersweet moment to be saying thank you for everything that you did for the library and for me personally. Everybody there wants you to succeed, because when you succeed, they succeed too.
Behind me, behind me on the stage are two resolutions. So at this time, we would like to read a resolution of appreciation for Provost Cudd, Trustee Tammy Hadid.
Whereas Anne E. Cudd, Provost and Senior Vice Chancellor of the University of Pittsburgh, has rendered unique and valuable services to the university for the past five years. Anne?
Whereas Anne Cudd began her affiliation with the university early on as a student, earning her doctorate in philosophy, Master of Arts in Philosophy, and Master of Arts in Economics at the University of Pittsburgh, which helped to lay the groundwork for her reputation as a committed educator and scholar at esteemed higher education institutions.
And whereas upon completion of her doctorate studies at Pitt, Anne Cudd joined the faculty at the University of Kansas. After a successful faculty and administrative career at K U, in 2015, Anne Cudd was appointed Dean of the College of Arts and Sciences and the Graduate School of Arts and Sciences at Boston University, the largest college at the institution. Anne?
Whereas on June 29, 2018, following a national search, Anne Cudd returned to her alma mater when she was selected as Provost and Senior Vice Chancellor of the University of Pittsburgh, where she pursued many important transformative initiatives, and additionally joined the faculty as Professor of Philosophy. Anne?
Whereas under her leadership, the university developed the Pitt Success Pell Match Program, the largest restructuring of financial aid in the institution's history, which matches federal Pell Grant for students in all five campuses. By launching the Related Provost Academy Summer Bridge Program, she created an environment to set up participating students for success. Since the Pitt Success Program's inception, the number of Pell-eligible students at the university has increased, and average student debt has decreased. Anne?
Whereas to advance diversity and inclusion at the University of Pittsburgh, Provost Cudd supported multiple faculty cluster higher initiatives, including the Latinx Cluster Hire and the Race and Social Determinants of Equity, Health, and Well-Being Cluster Hire and Retention Initiative, and appointed a Vice Provost for Faculty Diversity and Development. She also has been influential in advancing the university's community engagement efforts and has strongly advocated for recognition of community-engaged scholarship among Pitt faculty and.
Whereas she was instrumental in creating and implementing the strategies that helped the university to weather the COVID-19 pandemic, including facilitating novel teaching modalities, specifically the Flexit Pitt Instructional Model, which supported instructional continuity during unprecedented times. In addition, she helped develop a new budget model for the university, which empowers schools to advance their operations due to these efforts and more. The University of Pittsburgh has been strengthened under her tenure, as evidenced by the record number of undergraduate applications to the university, record enrollment and diversification of classes, and continued interest in the university, both domestically and abroad. Anne?
Whereas Provost Cudd contributed significantly to the academic prowess of the university through key leadership hires, including two regional campus presidents, five deans in the provost's area, and four vice provosts, chairing the search for the Senior Vice Chancellor for the Health Sciences and John and Gertrude Peterson Dean of the School of Medicine, and overseeing the successful reaffirmation of the university's accreditation through the Middle States Commission on Higher Education. Anne?
Whereas she continuously championed the ongoing growth and enrichment of the university by supporting the annual Year of Observations with a spotlight on creativity, engagement, data in society, and emotional well-being. The establishment of the Public Art Committee and the support of significant university library system acquisitions, such as the August Wilson Archive and the George A. Romero Archive. Anne?
Whereas Anne Cudd has represented the university externally by chairing the Atlantic Coast Conference Academic Consortium, serving as Vice Chair of the A C C Provost Network and serving on the Board of Directors of both Manchester Bidwell Corporation and the Forbes Fund. She also has remained a leader in the field of philosophy, recently submitting a book manuscript on merit to Oxford University Press, and continues to serve as an academic mentor to fellow philosophers. An avid runner and outdoors enthusiast, Anne Cudd managed to achieve these many accomplishments while also training for and completing the 2019 Pittsburgh Marathon and climbing multiple 14ers in Colorado's Rocky Mountains. Anne?
Whereas Anne Cudd has earned the admiration, affection, and respect of the members of Board of Trustees, as well as the university's administration, faculty, staff, students, and alumni, for her integrity, dedication, loyalty, and devoted service to the university.
Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees do hereby express their sincere appreciation and profound gratitude to Anne Cudd for her outstanding leadership and exceptional contributions to the extraordinary progress of the University of Pittsburgh.
And be it further resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees wish Anne Cudd exceptional success as she assumes the presidency of Portland State University, and look forward to her continued dedication to the University of Pittsburgh as a distinguished alum.
And be it further resolved that this resolution be made a permanent part of the university's records, and that it be suitably inscribed and presented to Anne E. Cudd as a symbol of gratitude for the exemplary leadership she has provided and the high regard in which she is held by her many friends and colleagues at the University of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion on the resolution of appreciation for Provost Cudd? A second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is passed. Anne, thank you. I, I have been told by the provost, she actually now has a place to live in, in Portland. And so an appropriate gift has been ordered, inscribed, and will be sent to you at your new residence. So we want to thank you. Anne, any remarks, please?
Thank you. I'm overwhelmed with emotion, but I want to say how appreciative I am of the board's support. And this was really amazing and overwhelming. You know, I came here when I was 22 years old for the first time to the University of Pittsburgh, and in September. I never visited before I actually came here. I knew the reputation of the university's philosophy department. And, you know, it was when I got here and I saw the Cathedral of Learning, I would say that I was just euphoric. And I thought, how did I ever get here to this top graduate school? I thought I had really made it already. And, you know, to come back then, after I received such a great education that set me up for a great career as a philosophy professor, but to come back as the provost has really been the privilege and honor of my life. And I am so grateful to Pat Gallagher for giving me the job, and to you all for electing me as the provost. As Pat said, this is definitely a team sport, this academia. And I've been so privileged to work with an incredible team in the office of the provost. And many of you are here today, and I thank you so much for all of the work that we've done together. We could not have achieved any of those things that were listed without your continued devotion to the university and to its mission. And then to my colleagues on the senior leadership team, it's been really a joy to work with you and in friendship. It's the ideal of a cohesive leadership team that Pat has built. So I'll take a lot of great lessons, I hope, to Portland State University. Goodness knows, they need some help. But I think that, again, Pitt has set me up for a great final chapter in my career. So thank you so much. And I'll be back.
So he asked me, "We're done, right?" As Chancellor Gallagher mentioned in his report, this is also his last meeting, as he will be stepping away from the position of chancellor after nine years of extraordinary service and leadership. The end of any era, particularly one that has been as impactful and successful as that of Chancellor Gallagher, is always difficult to accept. So this is indeed a bittersweet moment for the academy, and many of us who've had the pleasure and privilege of working with the chancellor. He and his team have achieved many accomplishments and provided the leadership that has guided Pitt to greater heights. As I have said on many occasions, by whatever metric you choose to measure or use, the chancellor's stewardship of the university has been a success. We have much to celebrate and thank him for. Pat, I personally will miss our weekly calls, your unwavering sense of humor, and the urgent "we need to talk" texts. Actually, I may not miss those quite as much. You will be, and this is both for me and Chilla, you will be deeply missed in this role. Good news is, we're not going to let him go too far. Please join me in watching a presentation on Chancellor Gallagher.
Well, certainly when I heard the name Pat Gallagher, I said, hey, we're going to have an Irishman for our chancellor. So I was excited to meet him. And then when I met him, I said, hey, this is a smart Irishman, too. Pat is a wonderful person, and a brilliant man, and did a great job for us.
You know, you think of him as a chancellor of a major university. But when you actually know him, and sit down and talk to him, he's approachable, reasonable, I would say compassionate, like a human being.
Chancellor Gallagher listens. He certainly talks and asks questions, but he listens intensely to everything you have to say, because he cares about what you have to say, and he wants to learn more about you.
I would say genuine value to one word, like, you know, Chancellor Gallagher is who he is. He's caring for everybody. He's thoughtful. He is, he's just a special guy. I mean, I think if you need something, you can call him. You don't have to go, I can't call him. He's too big to be able to call. I think he's there for everybody.
First of all, he's just a great boss and a great person. And, you know, you always want to work for someone that you can wake up in the morning and feel good about. And that's how I describe Chancellor Gallagher to people that don't know him. Every morning I got up, I knew I was working for a great person.
Come to know about Pat is his ability to stick with an idea and to pursue it even when it's not yet obvious to everyone around them, or him in this case, that there's something there. And it's in that regard that we found a wonderful partner at the foundation.
What I've learned most about him is how cool he can be under fire. Great sense of humor, and never loses that sense of humor. Keeping things in perspective. He's got a very sharp sense about what's important and what's not. So if I've learned something about him, particularly over the last year, is how fortunate we were to have a very steady hand at the helm of this institution for the last nine years.
I was at the White House by the time he was leaving. And so one day out of the blue, I get this email from him that says, hey, I'm coming to town. Do you have time for lunch? I want to pick your brain on something, I think is what he said. And I was like, sure. So I met him for lunch, and we started talking about Pittsburgh. And I was like, how do you like Pittsburgh? And he's like, I love it. It's great. And he started talking about all the things. And I said, you know, I like Pittsburgh. I've been there a couple of times. This is a great city. And he said, so, would you come to Pittsburgh? And I said, for lunch? And he said, no, I need a general counsel. And I was like, wow, this is intriguing. Let's talk about it. So that's kind of how it happened. I had no clue who was going to ask me to do that. It took my mom a long time to forgive me for leaving Barack to come meet Pat. But now she loves Pat, and I think she's almost forgotten that I deserted Barack for Pat.
There were only three who showed what I regard as the final step, and Patrick was one of them. The last six months of his thesis, I didn't have to worry about whether the little bird could fly when he left the nest, because his attitude was, get out of my way, old man. This is my project. And I just loved it. I knew that it was a success.
Chancellor, and I reminded him of this, he tells me he makes a mean Manhattan. I tell him I make a better one. We're still trying to test to find out who makes the best Manhattan. He promises me he's going to give me a Manhattan at some point. Give me a Gallagher Manhattan at some point. So we'll see what happens.
You know, we were both invited to throw the first pitch at the Pirates game. He was going to throw the first pitch, and I was going to be the catcher. And I said to him, I said, hey, you know, there's a lot of people there. When you're on the mound, just give me a head nod so I can get ready. So I'm waiting for the head nod or some indication that, you know, he's, hey, I'm ready to go. At this pitch, all of a sudden, here it comes. He just wound up throwing it. And I was like, oh. And I couldn't get to him. And I felt terrible, because I wanted to catch his ball. But it was a funny moment. Like, give me the indication. But, you know, you get out there sometimes, and things go crazy.
One of the things that I'll miss is just his approach to the work that we do, both from an intellectual perspective, being very bright, in my opinion, brilliant, and then also just a compassionate, really empathetic human being. Sometimes it's hard to find all of that in one person in that type of role. And I think he nailed it.
In terms of what I'll miss most, I would say his openness. These things that I really appreciated about Pat, in terms of his openness, his consultation, his ability to listen, may continue with a new chancellor. I hope it does, and I'm optimistic it will. But there are the certain characteristics of Pat that I think made him a good chancellor.
His leadership was so impactful. I think we will miss that. We will miss his accessibility. We will miss his great friendship. I will miss his friendship, but I think we'll still be friends. What we have to do is celebrate the nine years that he was here, and to really look at all that he did, and how he really made it into such a national presence, if not a worldwide presence.
Thank you for everything that you have done for the library. I know that I couldn't have done it without you, and I thank you deeply for that. I wish you the best of luck as you start your teaching career, and I hope that you won't forget to bring your students to the library.
The advice would be enjoy this chapter of your life. So he was at the helm of a very large university for a pretty long time. Sustained some bumps, but at the end of the day, he's now free of that and able to do what he enjoys and loves, and that's be an instructor, a teacher. So embrace it, because I know he will, and be blessed, because he's a blessed man.
My advice for him is that he's done everything else right in many stages of a very complex career. And you should just follow his instincts. I'm sure he'll do it very well.
If you thought government was hard, and you thought running a university was hard, and if you thought building a life sciences cluster was hard, good luck with intro to physics and your freshman class. You're going to need a lot of TAs, I can tell you that right out of the gate. But I think you're going to do a great job. It's just going to take you a little while to freshen up on some of the content there. But wishing you all the best in your role.
We got very close, and obviously both professionally, and then as a person, I got to really admire him and kind of know him. I think the most important thing to remember is that any time someone makes a decision like this, you have to be happy for them. And I was just happy for him that he was making a decision that he felt was best for him. And I knew the university would survive and move on. But I think the legacy that he left is immeasurable, and I think people will appreciate that, not just now, but also in time as they look back in terms of where Pitt is, in terms of a position of strength. So I had mixed emotions. I was thrilled for him. I was sad for our core group. But in the end, you know, he's still going to be a part of Pitt. And I won't be taking his physics class, however.
We now would like to read a resolution of appreciation for Chancellor Gallagher, former trustee, sorry, former chair of the board, trustee Steve Strick.
Whereas Patrick Gallagher has rendered unique and valuable service to the University of Pittsburgh for nine years. And?
Whereas on February 8, 2014, after an extensive national search, this board elected Patrick Gallagher to serve as chancellor of the university, in recognition of his impressive background in promoting partnerships that develop innovation and support research and other academic pursuits to advance the greater good of society. And?
Whereas Patrick Gallagher returned to his alma mater and lived up to his expectation, realizing tremendous gains in Pitt's academic profile and demand, solidifying the university's role as a community partner and anchor, and elevating Pitt's research stature, impact and activity to near peerless echelons of excellence. And?
Whereas under Patrick Gallagher's leadership, as the nation's higher education landscape largely floundered, the university saw its applications for admission rise to record highs, then inch even higher. During this time, students, faculty, staff, and alumni crafted enviable records of accomplishment. New graduates landed jobs or advanced educational opportunities at record rates, and Pitt opened its first new school in more than two decades. And?
Whereas the university expanded its meaningful reach into the community, launching an urban-place-based community engagement model, empowering small businesses throughout the region, leading the way with diverse hiring initiatives, and earning, for the first time in its institution's history, the Carnegie Foundation's classification for community engagement. And?
Whereas buoyed by Patrick Gallagher's vision, Pitt supported researchers and the application of research in unprecedented ways. And today, the university ranks third in the country in terms of funding from the National Institutes of Health, and has secured its status of one of just 24 universities nationwide to reach and exceed the billion-dollar mark in sponsored research expenditures. And?
Whereas during this time at Pitt, Patrick Gallagher revolutionized the institution's approach to financial aid, launching programs and initiatives aimed at making a world-class Pitt education more accessible and affordable to all. Key to this work was prioritizing the preservation of the university's longstanding relationship with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, a partnership that continues to yield a life-changing benefit, dramatically reducing tuition costs for Pitt's in-state students and families. And?
Whereas Chancellor Patrick Gallagher led the physical evolution of Pitt's five campuses, including creating dedicated offices to advance research, equity, diversity, and sustainability, guiding Pitt Titusville's transformation into a workforce development hub, and shaping the university's future through facilities like the Assembly, Pitt BioForge, and Victory Heights. And? Whereas Pitt student athletes, coaches, and staff have flourished under Patrick Gallagher's watch, earning several titles, including four Atlantic Coast Conference Championships in volleyball, two college cup appearances in men's soccer, one conference championship in football, and one national wrestling championship. And?
Whereas while securing these accomplishments and many, many more that will go unnamed today in a bid for rest at Pitt's helm during the COVID-19 pandemic, one of the most tumultuous and trying times in the university's long history. And?
Whereas over the course of his tenure as the 18th chancellor of the university, Patrick Gallagher evolved from a well-regarded federal servant into one of the most sought-after leaders and innovators in the higher education sector, serving as Chair of the Commission on Economic and Community Engagement for the Association of Public and Land Grant Universities, Chair of the Association of American Universities Board of Directors, and Chair of the Education and Workforce Advisory Committee for Pennsylvania Governor Josh Shapiro. He was also one of just 12 members appointed by then-President Barack Obama to serve on the Commission on Enhancing National Cyber Security. These roles and many others saw Patrick Gallagher add immense insights and values to issues impacting all of higher education into causes reaching far beyond Pitt. And? Whereas Patrick Gallagher earned his sincere appreciation and respect of members of the Board of Trustees, as well as unfettered admiration of Pitt's administration, faculty, staff, students, and alumni, and the larger community. And today, he is deservedly regarded as a leader who is incomparable in his integrity, dedication, and selfless service to the university.
Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees do hereby express profound praise and esteem for Patrick Gallagher's many outstanding contributions to the University of Pittsburgh.
And be it further resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees wish Patrick Gallagher continued success and happiness as he sets off on the next exciting chapter of his life and his relationships with Pitt.
And be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the university's permanent records, and that it be suitably inscribed and presented to Patrick Gallagher to mark the deep gratitude and high regard that he has earned and will continue to inspire among many, among his many friends and colleagues at the University of Pittsburgh.
I will call for a motion in a moment, but I'd like to make one additional point. As you all know, a university has many stakeholders. And Pat, you have done an exceptional job of navigating these different groups. In fact, one defining characteristic of your chancellorship is your commitment to students and their success. You and I have talked often about how much you enjoy engaging Pitt students. In fact, I saw the first 2,000 handshakes. I happen to know that you are- I happen to know that you also enjoy walking. Many of us have seen you walk into work, sticking out in the crowd of students headed to class. Some quick math indicates that you've likely logged more than 5,000 miles walking to and from work over the last nine years. It's hardly surprising, then, that one of the transformational campus projects you tackled during your tenure involved the space just beyond this room, the plaza in front of the Student Union, and the path connecting the Union to the Cathedral of Learning. Today, this space is a vibrant hub of student activity with no shortage of people walking this way and that. And from this day forward, in honor of your exceptional service to the university, in recognition of your steadfast commitment to supporting students and in line with your fondness for walking, this area will now be known officially as Gallagher Walk. Unless, of course, you're a student who is late for class, then you will probably become Gallagher Run. In all seriousness, I am excited to introduce Gallagher Walk to this board and to this Pitt community and to join in the broader campus community and putting it in good use for years to come. And on behalf of the university and this board, I want to thank you again, Pat, for all that you have done for your alma mater, the University of Pittsburgh. I would now like to ask for a motion, a resolution approving the, a motion approving the resolution, sorry, of appreciation and the decision to establish Gallagher Walk at the University of Pittsburgh. A second, please? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Any abstentions? The motion is passed. Congratulations. Chancellor, any final remarks, sir?
Well, I already said a lot. I just had a couple of thoughts. One was, if I'd walked that many miles, I don't know why my weight has still gone up. And I'm also glad whoever made the video didn't show the actual pitch that I threw to Pat because you would have realized he would have needed a lot of notice to catch that ball. But I think I said the most important part. You know, and Anne captured it so well. You know, it's not very often somebody comes back to their alma mater, to a town, you know, where you met your wife and got married and have these incredibly deep roots, and then are asked to play a role that's both so deeply meaningful in the lives of so many people that go through here but plays such an important, vibrant role in this region. So once again, just, you know, thanks to all of you for, you know, making that happen and then linking arms with me and doing all the great things we did together. Universities last a long time, so no one person plays that, you know, central role. And really, the way I think about it, it's great to be part of whatever chapter you're invited to be part of. And I think, you know, Anne and I were given something that's just remarkable. And I just wanted to thank you all. How to Pitt?
Is there any new business to come before the board? The fall meeting of the board will be held on Friday, September 29th, 2023. Okay, if there's no additional business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Just a reminder that lunch is being made available for the trustees. And please, everyone, travel safely.